Thank you for joining us for the Fortuna City Council meeting for Monday, August 18th. If you'll silence your electronic devices, would you please join me with the flag sleeve? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Okay, we come now to presentations and proclamations, which we have done tonight. So we'll move right into the consent calendar. And we have 10, 11, 12 items for tonight. Minutes, council minutes from the 21st Administrative Department Monthly Report, Community Development Monthly Report, Finance, Parks, and Police Monthly Reports, as well as the Public Works and Report of Disbursements, and to authorize the city manager to award River Lodge exterior staining project to Hama Naka Painting Company and establish a maximum contract of $158,000. Would anybody like to pull anything?
I'd like to comment on the River Lodge staining.
Item I, anything, Carlos?
Nope.
Go ahead.
I'm not going to vote for this one, just because I have some reservations about the cost, the $158,000, and just the budget crunch the city has. And I think I've shared some of my concerns with some of the staff already, and it may just be an issue we agree to disagree on as far as the cost and necessity.
Okay. Maybe money saved in replacing wood and interior damage from leakage.
Sure, oh yeah, no, I definitely understand it. I just, I think, just with the amount of the cost, I think, I wonder if there aren't alternatives, like, you know, I did go out there and take a look at it, and it did, you know, seen, a lot of it seemed to be in decent shape. There was some bare wood in some spots that I wonder if, you know, some touch-up painting couldn't bite us a little bit of time, or touch-up staining.
Well, we'll see. Would anybody like to make a motion on this?
May I suggest that you remove item I from the consent agenda and then vote on that separately?
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the agenda except for item I.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, I am a motion for item I.
Well, I would say that if, Ev, I just would like to remind your council that I believe this is in the capital improvement plan, and that part of the reason staff could not conduct this particular project is because, one, there's not enough staff dedicated to be able to paint the River Lodge, so it would be piecemealed, and frequently, probably, the stain would not match over the course of a year or two, as staff would get to it, like I said, in a piecemeal approach. So just as a reminder to your council as to why this is before your council today.
Well.
You move yourself?
I make the motion if we have a second. If we don't have a second, it doesn't matter. And it appears we don't have a second, so this fails to move forward at this time. So that brings us to our business item. First item of business is a study session for nitrous oxide and tobacco retail license. We have a staff report.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Humboldt County Public Health with us today. They're here to present on nitrous oxide and a tobacco retail license ordinance. And we have Brianna Sherlock and Katie Slaughter, and they will provide you with a presentation. And I do want to apologize to the audience, our TV screens are not working because they have a fabulous presentation for you, but take it away.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Brianna Sherlock, and I'm the Director for the Healthy Kids Division at the Urban Health Services Council of Humboldt County, and Katie Joe Slaughter. Hi, everyone, I'm Katie Joe Slaughter. I am the Senior Health Education Specialist.
For our substance use prevention program, working with Brianna and public. Sorry, can you guys hear me now? Perfect. I'm Katie Joe Slaughter. I am the Senior Health Education Specialist for our Substance Use Prevention Program, also part of Public Health. I also serve as the Humboldt Substance Use Prevention Coordinator, and I am a proud Husky parent. Go Huskies.
All right, so we will be talking tonight a little bit about nitrous oxide and tobacco in our community, and specifically the recreational sales of these two products, and the impact that that's having on our community here locally, and the policy and environmental prevention work that we've been doing around the county in our seven incorporated cities, unincorporated county, and working with some of our tribal partners. Next slide, please.
So first, a very brief introduction to the issue around recreational nitrous oxide use in Humboldt. We know from the California Healthy Kids Survey that our young people take in the schools, that students are reporting that they have already used inhalants, including recreational nitrous oxide. We did a community assessment survey in 2021, and both young people and adults who took the survey highlighted that nitrous oxide misuse in litter should be a priority area for our prevention work. In May 2024, there was a fatal pedestrian collision involving a driver under the influence of recreational nitrous oxide in the city of Eureka. This was a watershed moment for those of us who work in prevention, highlighting how important this issue is for the health and well-being of our community. So a little bit about nitrous oxide. I won't go over all of the details on this slide, but the slide deck is available. Nitrous oxide is a colorless gas that is used appropriately in healthcare settings for sedation and pain relief. It's also used by the culinary industry to make whipped cream. It has an array of effects on the brain and body that I will talk about when used recreationally. I also want to point out that throughout this slide deck, we have photo content that was captured mostly by our staff of nitrous oxide products in the retail environment, and also nitrous oxide litter in the community. So recreational nitrous oxide use has a variety of short-term effects, most commonly dizziness and lightheadedness, but also including things like blurred vision, fainting, in severe cases, heart attack, and the potential for hypoxia or lack of oxygen to the brain and body. We are finding that recreational nitrous oxide use also has long-term effects. We have a variety of things listed here, which can include memory loss, vitamin B12 depletion, weakened immune system, neurological damage. Research is coming out more and more showing us that recreational nitrous oxide use is not benign to the brain and body and can have long-term impact on health. And I wanted to point out, the photo in this slide is a picture of a litter pile that actually I took at the mouth of the Van Duzen near Alton, right in the riparian zone of the wind, of the river. Next. And we included this slide just to make it clear, like, what we are talking about when we talk about recreational nitrous oxide use. I think a lot of people are familiar with the canisters of nitrous oxide, the little metal canisters that you may have seen littered in your community. They're also called chargers, whipits, or whip-its. Those canisters are loaded into what's called a cracker that dispenses nitrous oxide gas. And what we found in our retail analysis work is that you can now purchase tanks of nitrous oxide, from small to extra-large sizes, in our retail environment that steadily dispense gas. Next. So the, we have two slides that outline the implementation of our environmental prevention work around recreational nitrous oxide. Our retail analysis will present data about that in a minute, and all the work we have been doing in the city jurisdictions with the county and our tribal partners to promote the recreational nitrous oxide policy work and data collection. And I'm not going to go over all the details, but they are all here, and we have been actively engaged in this work since January 2024, when we were directed by the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors to look for ways to work on recreational nitrous oxide use in our community, and our program was awarded funding to do so in June 2024. So our team conducted a retail landscape analysis of where community members can purchase nitrous oxide in our community. We completed 144 retail observations from October 2024 to April 2025. This work included observations in unincorporated and incorporated Humboldt, so in both unincorporated areas and our city jurisdictions. We did not do any observations in our tribal areas to respect and honor that they are sovereign nations. So this is the overall analysis from what we found doing the retail observations. Our team observed nitrous oxide products located in plain sight at 24 of the 144 retail outlets. It's important to note that we only did located-in-plane-site observations, so we would scan what we could easily observe in the retail outlet. We were not looking in backrooms, locked areas, cabinets. So at 24 of the retail outlets, you could walk in and anyone would be able to observe nitrous oxide products for sale. Of those 24 outlets, 18 had crackers, canisters, and tanks. Five only had crackers and canisters, and one only had canisters. So the majority had all nitrous oxide products available, both products and paraphernalia. We mostly did undisclosed observations for staff safety. Next. And so this tells you a little bit more about what type of retail outlets you can find nitrous oxide products throughout Humboldt County. I want to highlight here, we're also here to talk about public health and the county's work on tobacco retail licensing. And one reason why these two issues are related, you will see on this chart, that there are 18 smoke shops in the county that sell both tobacco products, commercial tobacco products, and recreational nitrous. So there is an interface between nitrous oxide sales and tobacco sales throughout Humboldt County. We also, we have one chef store that sells culinary nitrous oxide intended for restaurant use. We have a home goods store that was selling nitrous oxide, a cracker and a canister for culinary use. Three independent shops that sold nitrous, a little surprising, two glass-blowing studios, and one sex store. And then we have one corner market in Humboldt that sells nitrous oxide products in a residential neighborhood in a city jurisdiction. Next. So we worked closely with one of our longstanding community partners who did the retail observation work in the Eel River Valley. Overall, the city of Fortuna has three smoke shops that sell both tobacco and nitrous oxide products, and there is one home goods store in the city of Ferndale that was selling, like I said, the cracker-canister kit that was intended for culinary use. We have anecdotal evidence that there may be another retail outlet in the city of Riedell that sells nitrous oxide out of plain sight, and community members have shared with us anecdotally that community members throughout the ERV may be traveling to the city of Fortuna to purchase nitrous oxide at the smoke shops. Next.
Okay, so as Katie Joe mentioned, some of our key findings from these retail observations are that recreational nitrous oxide products are readily available and located in plain sight in most jurisdictions in Humboldt County, including the city of Fortuna, and that the majority of retail outlets that sell recreational nitrous oxide products are smoke shops. So smoke shops are licensed tobacco retailers who, the majority of their inventory is focused around, you know, cigarettes and vapes and things of that nature. And that the retail outlets that are selling nitrous oxide also have a larger variety of flavored nicotine and tobacco products on their shelves, and that's important because in the state of California, it's now illegal to sell flavored nicotine products, and yet they're still on the shelves here in Fortuna and in other areas of the county that don't have a tobacco retail licensing ordinance. And the community, including retailers, as Katie Joe mentioned, have anecdotally shared that retailers are likely selling nitrous oxide in backrooms or behind closed doors. So what we've showed in our data is just what was available located in plain sight. And this photo was taken here in Fortuna. This is some packaging from some large nitrous canisters. So we have been working very closely with the Board of Supervisors, including Supervisor Bushnell, to bring forward a nitrous oxide ordinance for both the unincorporated county as well as for the cities. So far, the city of Arcata, the city of Riedell, and the city of Ferndale and unincorporated Humboldt County have all adopted nitrous oxide ordinances, sales bans on nitrous oxide. And so we're bringing it to your council today for you to learn a little bit more about nitrous oxide and what's available in our community, and particularly the access that youth may have to these products, as well as other community members. The main purpose of both the nitrous oxide ordinance, as well as the tobacco retail licensing ordinance, is to protect youth through limited accessibility of these products, as well as enforcing local, state, and federal laws. So, for example, it is illegal in California, under the California Penal Code, to sell or purchase nitrous oxide with the intent to inhale it or use it recreationally. And yet, as you can see from the data, it is still widely available throughout our community. As I mentioned earlier, it's also illegal to be selling flavored tobacco and nicotine products in the state of California, and yet those are also still widely available in many of our cities in Humboldt County that don't have a tobacco retail licensing ordinance. So what some of our policymakers here locally are interested in is having a unified policy approach between both unincorporated Humboldt and the city jurisdictions on both tobacco and nitrous, because what we saw, for example, with the tobacco retail licensing ordinance, which is currently applicable in unincorporated Humboldt, is that the products are getting pushed into incorporated cities, and, for example, owners that have retail outlets in multiple jurisdictions are sending products from one jurisdiction to another that doesn't have as tight of enforcement, so that they're still being sold, and that means they're still more widely available for youth in our community. It also provides the opportunity for us to have local control and to build relationships with our businesses locally. So our nitrous oxide ordinance, as I mentioned, was passed in June for unincorporated Humboldt, and then throughout June and July for some of the other cities. The tobacco retail licensing ordinance was passed back in July 2023 for unincorporated Humboldt, and now some of the other cities are interested in also looking at a tobacco retail licensing ordinance for their jurisdictions locally. Next, please. So some of the major provisions in the county of Humboldt's nitrous oxide ordinance are a total sales ban on nitrous oxide and associated paraphernalia. This means that there are no exemptions for culinary or automotive use. It is permissible for use in healthcare, dental care, and pharmacy still, and if it's contained in a prepackaged food product, for example, the pre-made whipped cream that you can buy in the stores. The county of Humboldt has several different tools for enforcement of this ordinance. There is, it can be a misdemeanor, and then it can be elevated to a public nuisance, and then because the county of Humboldt and the unincorporated areas has a tobacco retail licensing ordinance, it can be a possible revocation of the tobacco retail license, which is a huge revenue source for many businesses. And then finally, it could lead to revocation of the business license if businesses still are selling nitrous. Next, please. And Humboldt County's tobacco retail licensing ordinance covers all of the federal and state laws, like I said, for not selling flavored tobacco, making sure that they have the appropriate signage up for who's allowed to purchase tobacco and nicotine products, and then it has some additional provisions to limit youth accessibility to tobacco products and to hopefully deter them from starting initiation of using tobacco, because in Humboldt County, 33% of all deaths, or approximately one-third of deaths, can be attributed to tobacco use in our county. So it is a huge issue here locally. And what we added, the Board of Supervisors elected to add a provision into the tobacco retail licensing ordinance, as I mentioned earlier, that if a tobacco retailer is found to be selling nitrous, they risk losing their license to sell tobacco. Next, please. And that's it. We've had a lot of partners working on this work with us, and we're very appreciative to all of them. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, I also know that Chief Eberhart had a few comments to add to the presentation as well.
Come on up, chief.
First and foremost, thank you to our presenters for shining a light on this issue. This is an issue in our community. Less than five days ago, we had our most recent arrest related to this. Our officer arrested a 24-year-old female in possession of a large canister of nitrous oxide. And when I talk about large canister, you've all seen Stanley cups, imagine way bigger than that. We are seeing, from the start of my career to where I'm at now, we saw a lot of small whippet containers, but it is more canisters we're dealing with. The usage is getting worse. During the arrest, the female that was arrested had some leg braces, had some physical ailments. She claimed to our officer that they were long-term effects from nitrous oxide use, and she had significant nerve damage. Like I said, it's dangerous. This individual was also known to another one of our officers in high school and knew, was known to have used nitrous oxide for many years. So this is not only dangerous, it is addictive. It is a problem in our community, like I said. An ordinance would align with our commitment to public safety and well-being, and ordinance would serve as a proactive measure in complementing our enforcement efforts under California Penal Code, 381B. Anything we can do to make it more difficult for individuals and youth to access nitrous oxide, to use it for illegal purposes, we fully support. We would gladly handle education, inspections, enforcement for this issue. We ask that, you know, myself as chief and the department, that you strongly consider moving forward with an ordinance on this to address both the issues, the flavored nicotine and the nitrous oxide. We'd also ask that, we see more leverage out of the administrative citations when we deal with our ordinances. So we'd ask that you also consider to have in there the option that if an individual is found in violation, that we can issue a administrative citation, which I believe carries up to $1,000 fine, and we can just stack those day after day until they address the issue. So, thank you for considering this.
A question?
Yes.
I, if memory serves me correctly, we had a major traffic accident on the southbound on and off-ramp area off North Main a few years ago, where I think whipits were found in the vehicle and around the vehicle. Is that correct? It was a major accident.
I can't recall the exact accident, but I can, you know, I've been here several decades, and throughout my career, I have seen canisters, containers, individuals under the influence of it, associated with criminal behavior, associated with collisions and other things. It is an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open public comment in a moment, but is there any comments or questions from council?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for the public health staff. Is it any more dangerous or addictive than tobacco and alcohol?
I think that's a hard question to address, because addiction is a very complicated brain disease. But like the chief emphasized, this is a substance that can cause a lot of harmful effects on the brain and body, as well as in the community, because there is a pretty significant issue in Humboldt of nitrous oxide impaired driving. Unfortunately, when someone develops the addiction to recreational nitrous oxide use, they also lose that inhibition to drive while they're using nitrous oxide use, while they're using nitrous oxide, which is particularly dangerous for both them and everyone on the roads with them. So it's, it's kind of hard to say what is more dangerous or more addictive. They're all kind of, can have an equally negative impact on the community, especially if someone chooses to drive and use nitrous oxide. I also wanted to say the acts, just add that the access in the city of Fortuna is an issue in these smoke shops. Our partner who did the retail observations here was inside of one of the smoke shops when someone came in, and they had specialty ordered a very large, party-sized tank of nitrous oxide that is available here in the city of Fortuna, and that's particularly concerning from a public health perspective. It's very easy access to a large volume of nitrous oxide, and we are particularly concerned that youth could be exposed to that kind of tank of nitrous oxide. There's no stop function on a tank of nitrous oxide, which is also particularly concerning both for youth and for folks who have developed an addictive relationship with nitrous oxide.
And is there any risk for the people that are addicted that they'll just switch to something like airplane glue or electronic cleaner, or something that potentially be
Like I said, addiction is a very complicated brain disease and difficult to treat, so hopefully that person would get into substance use disorder treatment, and they would be able to move away from problematic substance use. I think nitrous oxide is what, as a Substance Use Prevention Coordinator, I hear about the most in Humboldt County and in the region when we're talking about inhalant use. So I think that that is our chief concern today, to remove these products from the retail environment and to reduce access.
I do have a question for the chief, and maybe the presenters as well. So the ordinance that you're looking for, the guidance that you are trying to get to the council, is the ban on the sale of nitrous oxide and possession as well, so that the police will be able to enforce the possession of it?
Yeah, if you're asking my opinion on what we should do, I think we should go as strict as possible. I think that it's our duty to do what we can to protect, especially our youth.
Perfect, yeah. That clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Good evening, council. I, this is a pretty passionate discussion item for me. Supervisor Wilson and myself started this item in '23 with public health, and the reason being is in the southern Humboldt community especially, it's very prominent down there. And Councilmember Stevens, to answer your question about tobacco use, and is it more addictive than alcohol or cigarettes? I'm not sure, but there's no age limit on it. So a 10-year-old can walk into any store and buy a nitrous canister if they wish, because they're, they're food grades. And so while alcohol and tobacco And so while alcohol and tobacco have an age limit and you're an adult and you're making a choice, you sometimes are not and you are pressured when you're a youngster. In Southern Humboldt, before I was a supervisor, I know many folks down there that have been paralyzed. It robs the vitamin, vitamin D or vitamin B12, and it paralyzes you. I had an employee that died at 22 with a cracker in his hand and his lungs had froze. There was another young man that died in Shelter Cove. His lungs froze. I've had many parents, many families, many people beg for this ordinance. And it also, this ordinance in unincorporated Humboldt, it also bans the sales from outside people to come in, like Amazon, which is super important. And I know that it's not a cure-all, but it is, it is a way to make it harder to find. I watch people out in front of my store in Garberville, my retail store, sit there in their cars and have nitrous until they're flopping like a fish. It's pretty unbelievable. Also, around 10 years ago, my vehicle was stolen and a young woman, a young woman stole my vehicle and she had a crash down by the Highway 36 exit. She hit a man and killed him in my car, and there was nitrous oxide found, little whippets found everywhere in the car. It's a very dangerous substance. I urge and plead and beg with your counsel to please consider this. It's very important for our youth, for the health of our community. Thank you.
And just to clarify, did, as far as the sales to youth, did you guys say it was a state law against that?
They're still selling them to them. And you could go anywhere and buy it right now. They don't, they don't, in Garberville, there's five stores that sell them. And they sell them to youth. I watch it. I video it. They do it all the time.
Yeah, so it is in the California Penal Code that it is illegal to sell or purchase nitrous oxide with the intent to get high. However, there's no enforcement for that. And part of the reason is that when people purchase it, they just say, oh, I purchased it to use whipped cream.
And if you're purchasing it for whipped cream, no age limit. So if a 12-year-old goes in and says, I'm buying it from my mom, she's making whipped cream, they can sell it to them. They're not going to say they're inhaling it. I'm sorry, I'm out of order here because it's back and forth. I apologize.
Any other public comment on this item? It's, I just, this, when I was reading this over the week, okay, come ahead.
I would like to say something. My name is Deborah Thomas, and I live in Fortuna, and I have witnessed big canisters of nitrous walking out of tobacco stores. And I lived in Southern Humboldt for 24 years, and I picked up two miles of the highway for Nick LaRue after his death on the Avenue of the Giants. And I probably picked up 100,000 whippets in 10 years. Seriously. And they literally drive down the road and do this, whatever they do, but they do it in the car, and it's very, very dangerous. And it's done excessively through this county. Thank you.
I was going to say that reading this brought something back to my mind. In '76, I was working in the valley, and we'd work from 5:00 in the morning till noon. We wouldn't take a break or anything, just worked straight through because it was hot. And one of the guys, two or three days a week, I'd see him go and pick up a can of whipped cream, and he would bring it back. And every once in a while, he would hold it over and it was straight up and down, not upside down, and he would huff the inhalant out of, the propellant out of that. So there's, like you said, there's a lot of different things happening with that stuff. And it's not, not good either. It's another case of a otherwise lawful product being irresponsibly and abused. And it's crazy. But if there's no, no more public comment on this, we, do we want to table this until the rest of the council can be here to see this presentation or discussion?
Yeah, it's unfortunate that we don't have a full council tonight, so your council could ask me to bring this back at a later date, and we can ask public health to come back again. I think they have the most information on nitrous oxide and the tobacco retail license. Or if you've heard enough, we can, you know, start with the nitrous oxide ban. So it's up to your council whether you want to potentially start with nitrous oxide ban or whether you'd like us to have public health come back for a second presentation when we have a full council.
I think it would be better to wait for the full council to be here. I mean, I understand wanting to do it, but...
It would be great if you made a motion to do that.
Well, I would ask, what do you guys think?
Well, I'm planning on voting against it, just because I'm kind of an advocate for personal liberties and, you know, trusting adults to make decisions in the privacy of their own home. As far as the sales to children and the littering, it seems like there are already laws against that. So I, you know, I, you know, I, as a business owner, I make alcohol, so I have to wrestle with, you know, the social cost of it. You know, I would like to think people are going to use it just for, responsibly, but I do recognize that it's going to be abused and potentially causing, you know, drunk and drive accidents and, you know, addiction. And, you know, that's kind of something that as we as a society kind of live with, you know, with our kind of, I don't know, kind of living in a free country, basically, you know, free to make your own choices. So, anyway, with that being said, since I am planning on voting against it, if you guys want to wait till the rest of the council is here, that's fine by me as well.
I make a motion to bring this back when the full council is here.
All right, second that. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And so we'll bring it back at the first available time.
Will do.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation, and it's eye-opening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, that brings us to our second presentation with the Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District. Do we have a staff report on that one?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So I'm Aaron Filmy, the Finance Director for the City of Fortuna. And tonight, I'm going to be presenting on the Fortuna Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EFID as we will call it throughout this presentation, and requesting that the City Council approve the next steps in our exploratory process. So the purpose of this presentation is threefold. The first one, I'll just kind of summarize and give a little background on the progress that we've been making as a city in regards to the EFID concept. The second is to recommend a supplemental budget allocation of $12,500. That will go towards a contract with Cosmot to conduct a fiscal impact analysis. And so to recap, for those who are not familiar with what an EFID is, an EFID is a special financing district that allows cities to fund public capital improvements without imposing new taxes. It works by capturing the increased, increase in property tax revenue, called the tax increment, generated within the district's boundaries. And participation is voluntary, and the goal is to pool resources from willing taxing entities to fund infrastructure projects. And so we're trying to get the County of Humboldt, for example, to join us. And so why an EFID for the City of Fortuna specifically? So Fortuna faces significant infrastructure challenges, especially at the U.S. 101 interchanges at Kenmar and 12th Street. These areas suffer from congestion, poor design, and limited pedestrian and bicycle access. And so improving these interchanges is critical to unlocking the economic and residential development potential and reconnecting the city to the Eel River. And so this is a timeline of kind of where we're at so far. So the initiative began in August of last year when the City Council authorized the initial exploration of an EFID. By October, we engaged Cosmot companies to conduct a feasibility analysis. In May, Cosmot presented their findings, and the council expressed interest in partnering with Humboldt County. And since then, city staff, county officials, and Cosmot have held several meetings and to discuss collaboration, and we've had promising discussions with the county, who have expressed general support for participating in the fiscal analysis and seeing what comes of that. And so the Cosmot's fiscal analysis will estimate projected revenues such as property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax, and expenditures like public safety and community services. The net fiscal impact will help us determine whether an EFID is financially viable and beneficial for both the city and the county. As a side note, Caltrans has also indicated a willingness to help identify matching grant funds for infrastructure improvements, but even with those grants, the city will still need matching funds. And we currently do not have any funding source for those matching funds. And so the EFID has been just one potential solution to start building up those grant matching funds. So the financial impact, the cost of this analysis is $12,500. It is a supplemental budget request, and will need to come from general fund reserves. And then as a reminder, our reserves currently sit at about $6.5 million, which is above the required minimum. After setting aside funds for the general plan update, which is about $1 million, we still have $250,000 in unreserved fund balance that could go towards this. And so staff's recommendation is that the City Council approve the supplemental budget request and authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Cosmot. And this will allow us to move forward with the fiscal analysis and continue evaluating the potential of an EFID in Fortuna. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to the council and answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. Again, we'll open this for public comment in a moment. If there's any questions or comments from counsel.
I was seeing the report that they, the proposal that they turned in, and they had talked about how they met with certain county members to see the accessibility for them to work with us. So if they're already in that favorable position, then I don't see why we wouldn't move forward. So that's the only comment that I have.
And again, this is not a new tax. It is allowing the property tax that's collected on these properties that are in the district to be used in Fortuna. And as the property value goes up, the tax would increase, and that money would go big to pay for improvements, to make the area on 12th Street, Kenmar, more safe and friendly, especially pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, active transportation. But is there any public comment on this item?
So I think this item will still come to our board, but we have, I can say personally myself, I've met with Amy and I support this. Also, with the growth amount of monies, it gives you a bank of money that you can borrow from, and so it gives you a base where you don't have one now, and that would allow for some financing to do those items that you need. It's a good way to be able to, you know, develop your city and borrow against monies that are anticipated to come in in the future. I encourage your board to really, you know, do this and really move forward with this so that you can have some base of finance to get some grants and borrow from to do your infrastructure that you need.
Thank you. Any other comment? Well, with that, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the supplemental budget request in the amount of $12,500 and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Cosmot for the financing district fiscal impact analysis.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? One more task, one more step on the route to highway safety. And that brings us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. There was an Fbid meeting that was held on July 22nd. I also submitted the Land and Water Conservation Fund grants on August 4th for the Vansell Park acquisition and the development of one soccer field and a parking lot at Newburgh Park. We will not hear on that grant award until spring of 2026. There have also been solid waste franchise negotiations that continue, and some of what is to come is in the lobby. You will see the recycling and organic collection bins that are in the lobby, so on your way out, you can see what's coming likely in July of 2026. I've met with the McLean Foundation several times over the last month. I've also discussed Fortuna's interchanges, 12th Street and Kenmar, with the county and Caltrans. I have attended the Community Economic Resilience Consortium. There were, there was a tourism and marketing meeting on August 12th where we talked about Auto Expo and the Fortuna Rodeo and their contributions to transient occupancy tax. And we'd love to see those events contribute more to heads and beds. We'd love to see our transit occupancy tax increase. I also attended HDL sales tax meeting with our Director of Finance. We held a revenue generation ad hoc meeting on August 14th to talk about some potential options that will come back before your council, likely in September, for possible service reductions. I attended and spoke at Talk Shop on August 15th. There's a lot of work happening on the strategic and general plan updates with the upcoming listening campaign to better understand the vision and needs of Fortuna, and so staff are diligently working on that. I've begun working on the staff report to bring back to the City Council another workshop on rent stabilization. There is a meeting scheduled with myself, Mayor Johnson, and the city attorney with Stores Management next weekend, so we look forward to hearing from them. And then lots of meeting with department heads and city staff. And that concludes my city manager's report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for city manager? Thank you. It's complete. Look forward to some of the stuff that's coming in the future.
Me too.
Is there any future agenda items that anybody would like to see brought forward? Seeing none there. We'll move on to the council member reports with Councilmember Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the RCEA Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting on July, and we got a presentation from Humboldt Transfer Authority about their new hydrogen fuel project and how they are moving towards replacing their fleet with hydrogen fuel buses so that they are more efficient. And they're quite expensive, but they are working towards attaining one. I believe that they already have one in the works that is coming in, and they're going to be able to use that to service most of the Humboldt County area in one load instead of having to refuel as many times with the regular fuel, carbon-based fuel bus. So it was pretty interesting to see, and that's all that I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Nothing new to report from my end. The last redeck meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum, so nothing to report from that, and have not yet gone to a HCOG meeting as an alternate yet.
Okay, well, that brings it to me. And I do have an HCOG meeting this Thursday. One of the items on there will be a presentation, I believe, on that bus, the same presentation that was here at the symposium. And so I'm looking forward to that. We also have... We also have the regional housing needs analysis presentation. And I'm looking interestingly and with some trepidation at that, we'll see where we end up. But that's the one thing on the horizon. The other thing, hope to see both of you guys at the Redwood Division meeting at River Lodge, 3:00 PM this coming Friday. And Redwood Division of Cal Cities. We hosted it last time, I think it was two or three years ago, and we're hosting it again this year. And we'll have that, a tour of the Clendenon's apple orchard, then stop at a tour at the museum in Roaner Park, and finishing with a dinner at Los Casas. So it's an opportunity for people from out of town to see Fortuna and see what we have to offer outside of the freeway as they drive through. So that's all I have to report at this time. From this point, we'll move to oral comments from the public. And with that, I'd like to say we have three minutes. I believe we have a timer up here. And we would like to let people know to, as much as our enthusiasm comes up, we would like to not have applause or cheering or that kind of thing because there's more than one side to every issue, and both sides can be represented. And some people would be discouraged from participating possibly with that. So you can bring, come up, you can say your piece, and, but we would just ask to watch out for applause and cheering.
My name is Karen Denny, and if you will notice how close I am to the mic, okay? So when you did your presentation, you moved your mic forward, and just a little bit I move away. So I am requesting better audio, whether you move your microphones closer to your mouth so that we can hear, and I barely heard your presentation. So yes, we're old, yes, our hearing is, you know, but could you please look at that?
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Lana Craig, and I'm representing, I guess, myself and the rent standardization ordinance, and I just have something to say about that. I'm a resident of Royal Crest. I live on a small social security-
Can I be closer to the mic?
Oh, thank you. And I live on a small social security income. I sold a house, saved a little bit of money for my golden, yeah, my golden years. Now I have to take money from my savings every month. It will last about two years. I'm 80. I'm looking for a job if anybody needs someone competent with a lot of experience so I can stay in my home. I have no alternative plan at the present. I'm hoping that living in my car will not be an option. That's kind of scary. And I hope your grandparents will not ever have to go through such dilemmas. I was in this chamber in July. I heard a caller who was representing the park owners association say, among other things, that there was a rent assistance available at Royal Crest for residents with very low incomes. I really got excited, thinking I might be able to apply for such a thing. The next day, I went to the office and asked to apply. The park manager, who's the best manager in years, told me she did not know of such a program but would check into it. Two days later, I went again. She told me Royal Crest has, Royal Crest has no such assistance program. When I told her what the park owner's representative said at the city council meeting, she said she did not know why that was said. Their representative made this claim at a public meeting to make all of the Royal Crest owners look like people who really care about us. Instead, it's just more obvious that the park owners misrepresent their intentions and will say anything to win. They should be ashamed of themselves rather than finding legal ways to satisfy their own greed. Please don't allow Royal Crest Stores Management and Heritage Funding treat us, the seniors of Fortuna, with such disregard. Be our heroes next time when the future agenda item comes up for rent stabilization ordinance. Please vote yes. Vote yes for us. Help us instead of them. Thank you very much for listening. Thank you for seeing us. Thank you for allowing us to speak our piece.
Hello, council. Thanks so much for all the time you give to the folks of Fortuna. My name is Ricardo, and I live in Royal Crest. I'm here tonight to talk about protecting yourselves from having the wool pulled over your eyes by stores. As I'm sure you remember, they paid their attorney to write you a letter warning against adopting an RSO or rent stabilization ordinance. Plain and simple, that man is deceptive. He started out by saying Stores does not own Royal Crest, that nothing could be, quote, "further from the truth." He said that Royal Crest is owned by Royal Crest LP. Well, according to legal filings with Humboldt County, Royal Crest has not been owned by Royal Crest LP since 2022. In that, sorry. In that owned, sorry. In that year, ownership was published as Heritage Investors Corporation. The president of Heritage Investors Corporation is listed as Peter Dieterding. But guess who is also the treasurer for Stores? Yes, none other than Peter Dieterding. Heritage Investors Corporation is a subsidiary of Stores. Who then is far from the truth? The sworn officer of the court, Attorney Rodriguez, that's who. Then Stores attorney goes on to say that the owners of the park have, quote, "deep concern for the residents of the park, as evidenced by money spent at the park." I asked how Rodriguez can characterize the owners at all, since he doesn't even appear to know who they are. But more importantly, the money he lists was, that was spent out of deep concern for residents was, in reality, spent because of the state mandated health and safety regulations that had long been violated or at risk of violation. So it was really spent out of deep concern for avoiding state housing and community development enforcement. Then Rodriguez goes on to say that a rent stabilization ordinance will jeopardize the ability to operate the park and even to threaten possible litigation. Well, facts show that Stores owns 34 parks in California, and 10 of them are in communities with RSOs. And what do you want to bet that Stores purchased those parks after the RSO had already been passed? There are no records of the parks shutting down or of Stores mounting any litigation. They know full well they can still make a healthy profit with the RSO. To sum up, I am asking you to see this park owner for what they are, exploiters of the most vulnerable amongst us. They are asking you to be complicit in their deceit and their exploitation. Please do the right thing and place this issue on your next agenda. I also have, oh, I also have some documentation from the county of Humboldt that shows the properties that Stores, who owns Royal Crest. If I can give that to city clerk.
Up we go. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Deborah Thomas, and I'm a resident at Royal Crest Mobile Home Estates. And I shared my testimony, but I also want to now share my neighbor's testimony that I moved there and I was able to live there on my retirement, and that was only six years ago. And I now am paying $822, which was, it was $620-something dollars when I started. And I had to go back to work, and now I have cancer, and my neighbor has cancer too, and we both have to take chemo, but we can't take chemo and go to work because we'll be too sick. And so, we are really stuck in this place of we cannot take care of our medical without us ending up on the streets. And so, we're really in a bad position, and I would ask that you please protect us and allow there to be this last place of affordable housing for us as seniors since we have worked hard in this community. And also, and if you don't do that, then you're going to have to change some ordinances and put some campgrounds and a place that we can put some RVs because that's where about 200 and maybe 10 of us are headed very soon, very, very soon. And we are running out of time. There are many of them that can't be here that are up in their high 80s. We had a 100-year-old man in our trailer park. We are really running out of time. So when this does come on the agenda, I ask that you please vote yes for us. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to talk again. Something happened since the last meeting regarding Royal Park, living there. I have a $135,000 home. All my money is in my house. I can't sell it for what it's worth. And I have a nice house. This last time we had to bill in on the rent, I am by myself. I do volunteer rides. I'm not home a lot. It's summertime. My gas bill was $329. I never go over $175 in the wintertime. I went to that office four times, finally on the fifth time, I never got it resolved. They are gouging us. They need inspected. They're inept. They don't mind taking money from seniors at all. They, they, they think you're going to pay that, and they don't even check their bills. The man behind me, who's got a larger home, only got charged $6 for his gas, so I paid for my whole cul-de-sac for the gas. And it's not appreciated. Like people like me, it's a sleepless night. I make enough to get by on, like Deborah. If it goes up more and more, and I thought I would be okay, I worked on my life, I won't be. And especially with $300 utility bill just for gas. Please help us and put us on the agenda, and please approve this. I appreciate you listening to me, and thank you.
Hi, I don't live at Royal Crest, but I'm just a community member, and I'm just moved by their story. My grandmother lives in a similar situation down in Sacramento, and someone earlier described it as, I think they said, "extorters of the most vulnerable among us." And I don't know, I just, I'm reflecting on the last meeting when that representative phoned in and was saying pretty harshly, like, "If you don't like it, apply for a voucher. If you don't like it, just move." "Oh, you should be grateful. It's probably worth more than you bought it for." And it's like, there's people, they're 100 years old, and it's just like, if I ever talked to an elder like that, like, just thinking when I was a kid, I'd get smacked right in the mouth. And it's just like, I hope you guys remember that or think of that when, when you meet up with them. What is it, next week? Just like such a lack of respect, and I don't know, I thought it was sickening. So when it comes up, please vote for the rent stabilization. And, you know, I'm here as a community member. I rent a house, and it's just, it's the same thing. Every year, $100 more per month I'm paying, $1,200 more per year. I get a raise, and I'm lucky, my raise is 800 bucks a month. And then, my insurance went up 100 bucks a month. So it's just like, you know what I mean? It's just, the only thing I would add, extend it to all rentals, you know? Be bold. People do whatever the hell they want out there, and we need people to stand up.
My name is Cecilia Holland. I don't live in Royal Crest, but I'm the executor of an estate up there. I've spent a lot of time up there this last several months. This community is a jewel. These people take great care of their homes. The landscaping is spectacular, so that walking on the roads up there is just a joy. The view is the best in Fortuna. This is a great advantage for Fortuna to have this wonderful community. I'm asking you, support this community, not the profits of people who don't even live here.
Good evening. My name is Laura, and I am a tenant of Royal Crest. I'm going to speak a little bit about the gas, the gas meters. I've lived there for nine years, and each year, we have asked them to update the gas meters, and they don't do it. They say, "Yeah, we, we got it planned. We're going to do it," and they don't. Every single year. They had one of our maintenance men try to upgrade it, and it blew up on him. You're supposed to be certified to do this, and he wasn't. And he did get injured. And then, the, the water pipes. This park was built in the late 50s, 60s. Those pipes are busting every single month. They're turning our water off every single month for patchwork instead of replacing the lines. They said, yes, they have updated the fire hydrants, they have done some patchwork on paving. They said they're going to continue the paving. Why pave it if you have to dig up and replace the water lines? I've got water backing up into my dishwasher. I've got it now backing up into the sink, into my bathroom shower. And I had my lines, I'm responsible for what's in the house, and I took care of it. And it was good for about five days, and now it's all coming back again. I've got a plumber coming out to check their side of it, and I'm hoping and praying that they say, "Yeah, we're going to take care of it," and then they don't. They've told us this for years. They can't be trusted. And they do bring in more than $2 million a year. That money could be spent on hiring locals to take care of these problems. It would bring money into their pockets, which puts money back into Fortuna. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Hi, my name is Cheryl, and I am not a resident of Royal Crest, but my mom is. And she's 82 years old. She's been there for almost 20 years, and it's time for her to retire, but she can't retire. I retired this year due to health problems, and I would qualify to live in this housing, but obviously, I wouldn't be able to afford to live there either. It's really hard to sit and watch at 82 for her not to be able to retire. She pays over $1,000 for a single wide space, the home that she purchased, and she takes immaculate care of it. And it is just, it's appalling to watch what these people have done to our seniors here in this park. I've watched it from the day she moved there to the grass being taken care of, to them just not taking care of the place anymore, to moving in mobile homes that are pretty well-trashed, and yet, they are not upkeeping their part of that property and fixing these properties. But they're requiring these residents to make sure their places are immaculate, whether they can afford it or not. And they continue to raise the rent every year, a substantial amount for my mom to pay. What she pays for that place is outrageous when she owns that home. And like I said, it is a single wide, tiny, little place. And she's, she pays, like I said, to pay $1,000, then you add your, your gas, your utilities and everything else. She works three days a week. The three days a week is to help her pay to continue to live in there. Because I said, "Well, you want to move in with me?" And she's like, "Hell, no." So, you know, I get it. She's had her independence. She's in great shape, and she, you know, she walks all over the place, and she sees what goes on there. And she considers this place her family because she's been there over 20 years.
Hi, my name is Hillary Mosher. I'm the regional manager for the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League. I was here last month urging you to place the issue of a rent stabilization ordinance on your agenda. I want to thank you for voting to do so. Now, I'm here to urge you to schedule the issue for your next meeting. Amy has said she might be able to get it on by mid-September. The problem is that park residents could receive notice of rent increase at any time. The problem is that park residents could receive notice of rent increase at any time. This places them in jeopardy of losing their homes, even becoming homeless. Tonight, I want to urge you to consider enacting a rent increase moratorium until this issue is resolved. Many other communities have done so, such as Sonoma County in 2023 and San Jose in 2021. A moratorium prohibiting rent increase is a way to give the council and staff time to get the information they need to do a thorough job while allowing park residents relief from fear. You may be unaware of the fear we residents can experience at the hands of retaliating park owners. These balloons represent dozens of residents who are not here today due to fear of retaliation. We speak for them. They also represent residents too old and disabled to be able to come to this meeting. You are in a position to prevent more than 50% of Fortuna's affordable senior housing from becoming more unaffordable. More than 100 other communities across the state have done so. It does not need to be expensive. You can easily adapt the RSO from Humboldt County. I have done so for Fortuna, and the adaptation has been emailed to each of you. I co-wrote the Measure V ordinance with the attorney from the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League. Measure V has worked for almost 10 years. Park owner threats of litigation are, by and large, hollow. Anyone at any time can sue Fortuna for any ordinance. That should not be a reason to allow billionaire park owners to squeeze vulnerable seniors. Please do the right thing, and either do it at your next meeting or enact rent increase moratorium until you can do it. Thank you so much for the work you do here. Here is some documentation of the Sonoma and San Jose moratoriums.
Hi. My name's Dan. I'm a, I'm not a resident of Fortuna yet. I'm a guest, and I've become familiar with Stores and Royal Crest management through my friends who, who live there, that I've been visiting and spending time there. Just a couple of days ago, a notice was sent informing residents that an inspection would start this morning of their properties and all the things that needed to be done. And it sent my friend into a panic, and I helped her deal with that. And it reminded me of a Section 8 inspection for people on government housing to get to live in subsidized housing. These are owners who are retired and older, and it was like a note from the military. If, if you're paying rent on a place, not even as owners, these people own their homes, and they're paying rent for the space. The infrastructure is appalling. Everybody's told you about it. We drove past the fire hydrant outside and the water line outside, and a road was closed for past three weeks, just, just now opened. And the, the work that was being described, being done there is patchwork. The money is not being reinvested. It's looked at as a cash cow. The threats are vague and inappropriate, and you're looking at people in fear who own their own homes, who aren't on government subsidies, who are being manipulated, who are the majority population of the residents who've spent their lives making this community better. They deserve better. It's time to act as now. I take it one step further than just rent stabilization. Let's go back 10 years. Let's roll back the rent. 10 years, when this should have been done, to what it was. 10 years back, and to put that out as a threat to Stores, watch them fold. You shouldn't be afraid of a corporation full of business people. I'm Jewish, and a man named Shlomo Resnick is a slumlord who's probably the most notorious slumlord in all of California. He owns more property than anybody, almost as much as Red Emerson, who owns half of the state's forests. So let's not be afraid of billionaires. Let's stand up for the people that live here, and let's do it today. Next agenda meeting, no stalling, moratorium.
No more public comment. Well, in that case, we will close public comment at this time. Thank you all for participating. And at this point, I would, I know we've got plans for moving ahead on things, so as time comes by, we'll take care of that. But at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.